Business enterprise that's there, then it's not.
Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, March 9th, 2015 Administrative Committee for the Moscow, City of Moscow. To my right is Jim Boland, to my left is Wayne Kraus, and to his left is Bill Bellnapp, and I am Dan Karschallin. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from February 23rd, and that's you and me, Jim.
I would move to approve.
They look good enough to me, too, so we'll consider them approved, Bill. Next up is the perch request for a letter from council allowing beer and wine license within 300 feet of a school or church per Idaho Code 23-913, and Rod Hall's going to present that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. Today, the owner of the perch, who represents that he's operating the business as a restaurant and a convenience store, is requesting a waiver from the city to be able to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption on the premises at the restaurant portion of his business. And under Idaho Code 23-1011B and 23-1307A, first one was for beer and the second one deals with wine, they prohibit any business from selling for beer or wine for on-premises consumption if they are located within 300 feet of a school or a church, and the purchase located within 300 feet of two churches. And so the issue is today is whether the city will grant him a waiver so that he can sell beer or wine in the restaurant.
Okay, but this isn't a public hearing, but it is a public meeting. You know, and we'd like to go ahead and let people speak in one side of another of it. If anybody'd like to come up and talk in one way or the other, that'd be fine. Come on up and state your name and address and tell us what you're about.
My name is Walt Lockteff. I've owned the premises since 18... 19, excuse me, 1989. I'm not quite that old. And I've leased, I've run the store myself for seven years. I've leased it out to several people that were, let me say, I had to separate the goats from the sheep. Now I have a young man in there who is a true businessman, and he has been working there since 12. The beer was served there years before that by other people. And I understand that we had to show that we're a restaurant to request the sale of beer and wine on the premises, which we have figures to show how much food that we're doing now. And as far as the 300 feet, it's been there since 1953, when Madge Brown was selling tap beer.
Well, but just because it was there, it doesn't make it, no, it doesn't mean it was legal. I mean, I could say, you know, I've been driving while intoxicated all the time. Doesn't mean-
Well, I'm not, I'm not justifying that portion of it. However, let me present what my problems are. We applied for all the building permits. We've applied for all of these things. And we were inspected, and we've invested almost $80,000 into the premises to convert it back to its original state, number one. Number two, I have lost an apartment next to it, which I live on social security and with little I get out of the apartments. I am losing rent on that apartment. Why weren't we told at the beginning, like, you can't do this? After we do everything, we jump through all the hoops, all of a sudden we're eight feet or seven feet short of 300 feet. That's my understanding.
Yeah, I can't speak to why you were, why anything happened prior as far as during your building permit process. I mean, but the code is the code, and we gotta abide by it.
Well, I was told by the city attorney that we have made a mistake in the past. Now we're correcting it, at my expense.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak up-
Go ahead, Rod.
-because that's not exactly what I said.
I quoted. That's a quote.
That is not a quote from me. Maybe he talked to the prior city attorney. That's not what I-
You.
That's not what I said. I said-
I quoted.
Okay.
Let's not argue. Let's let Rod speak.
I would like to, like to see that.
You would like to see that?
Well, you said you have a quote for, you have a quote for me.
You and I were speaking together in your office.
That's called hearsay.
Well, you're an attorney, so that's what you guys do.
Okay, go ahead, Rod.
What I tried to explain to him, just because something was happened in the past, that something was omitted, and something was being carried on unlawfully, does not mean that they get some kind of right, that the law gets to be waived. Just because somebody was acting unlawfully in the past is not an excuse to continue operating unlawfully in the future.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Walt, how's this apartment come into play? I don't quite understand how that falls in line here.
When I've, when I purchased it from Madge Brown, she had an apartment adjacent to the little store. I ran the store for seven years. And when Mr. Ball came into play, he said, "Why don't we expand it? We can do this. We can do that." He had a license at the time. And so I said, "Okay, fine. Let's tear down the wall and just, and restore it to its natural-"
Apartment's no longer an apartment. It's part of the-
Part of the, part of the facilities, correct. We had to shore up the flooring, all kinds of steel beams. I mean, it's architecturally what the, what the department wanted.
Okay. Bill, do you have something?
I just want to provide a clarification. There are two separate processes that are involved in a project like this. There's the building permit side, in which a restaurant is a permissible use in that zoning district. And so they went through the permitting process for the expansion of the restaurants, but they needed to have the food service because bars or drinking establishments are not permitted uses in that district. The licensure of the issuance of beer and wine licenses are actually handled through the city clerk's office and through the state and not through the county as well. So through the building process, it was identified it was going to be a restaurant. It was clear that food service had to be furnished and provided, and they met all the applicable building code requirements. The question about separation from any church or school facility was not an issue of building permit issuance for a restaurant.
Right, correct. So evidently, beer and wine was never mentioned or never discussed at that point, where-
Well, we had, we had a going license at the time. We had a license at the time. We were already serving-
But not necessarily, I mean it-
Okay. All right, let's approach it from a different angle, please. We're within, you want to be 300 feet, right? We measured-
That's what the loss is.
That's right. And we measured, I think you stated to me, you measured from door to door.
I think the lieutenant from the police department testified that what a, that distance was. I'm not sure exactly what it was, but it was under-
292 feet.
Okay. Something like that.
Something like that. So if that is the problem, we'll move the door.
The building is still, I mean-
But we're measuring 300 feet from door to door. That's what, that's how they, that's how they determine it.
No, we can argue semantics and everything. And I did this just, you know, as a, as a courtesy, but, you know, I don't think that we can, you know, we, before, the council said, "We didn't really think that this was a, something we'd wanted to do," because even whether it's been done or not before, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do, as Rod said. And with the recent history on campus, you know, with, with drinking and everything, there's no sense, we don't want to add that extra fuel to the fire, so to speak. As a, as an EMS professional here in town, I've noticed a downward trend in responding to drunk college students here in the last year, and I think that we're moving forward in a good way in that, in that. And I don't want to see anything to make us take a back step. Wayne?
Walt, question. You indicated that prior to the remodel, that the previous owner did have a beer and wine license.
Yes.
Which was, first of all, the beer and wine license has to be authorized by the state.
Yes.
And then, once the state does it, then it can be authorized by the county.
Correct.
But the state can't authorize one unless there's a letter from the city of Moscow stating that we would allow it. In the last testimony that we had, I don't recall that that letter had ever been supplied. And I, so I'm wondering how the perch got a beer and wine license without the city saying, "Yes, we agree that it's okay to put it in that area."
You see, I was not aware of this law to begin with. We simply applied for licenses, and they were issued.
Almost to me, it sounded like the state-
Somebody messed up somewhere.
Somebody screwed up.
Jim?
Well, how long has it been since you've had a license? Obviously, you don't have one now. How, how far back does that go? At what point did the, I haven't been on the council for more than a couple of months, so I'm trying to find out what happened in the past.
Yeah, in my name, my, the last license I had in my name, I'm guessing now, I have senior moments anymore, but I would say it was about seven years ago. I'm sure we can check the records here with Stephanie.
So there's been a gap of six or seven years that you haven't had a license?
No, no. Other people who ran the perch had the license in their names.
Yeah. What I'm trying to get at is, how long, how long have you been without a license? Or how long has the perch been without a license?
Six months.
I can explain that. Last year, maybe a little more than a year ago, the state gave them a provisional license, basically, so that they could, since they were representing that they were going to be a restaurant, they were going to give them an opportunity to, this is the prior owner to, than the current one, to allow them to establish that it's a restaurant, and he had to meet a certain sales requirement of food. It was represented to me by the Department of ABC, Alcohol Bureau of Control, or Alcohol Beverage Control, were doing an investigation, and they were getting ready to terminate that license because the food sales weren't there, and they were having all kinds of problems. Before that happened, the prior owner went in and said, "He's done. They're not going to go any farther." So they ceased, and that license actually terminated. And then I think the new owner tried to get a license, and then this issue came up.
Question for Rod.
Go ahead.
How could the state even give them a temporary license without the city authorizing it?
I don't think they knew its location. I don't think they knew that the churches were within 300 feet.
When I first applied for those licenses, somebody from ABC did come to the store, told me exactly where to place it on a wall, where the exits are supposed to be, where the coolers were supposed to be. So they knew that 509 University Avenue is right in the middle of Greek Row. They knew that.
Bill?
If I may, what they may not have been aware of was the LDS Institute's location and proximity to that store. Just looking at the statute, it does clarify, I just wanted to clarify this, that it is stated that, "No license shall be issued for any place where beer is sold or dispensed to be consumed on the premises, whether constructed for pleasure or profit, that is within 300 feet of any public school, church, or other place of worship, measured in a straight line to the nearest entrance to the licensed premises." I think the 292 feet that was measured was the walking distance on the sidewalks. I think if you did a straight line, you're actually probably closer to 250 feet, just to-
Okay.
...provide that information.
Another question for Rod and Bill. Well, I just want to get this scenario straight, is that Mr. Lockteff decides that he's going to expand this into more of a restaurant, okay? Applies for the building permits and so on, so forth, completes the construction, and because of licensing in the past, and the temporary license that the state had already issued, he's working under the assumption, with the expansion, that he's going to be granted a license from the state. After the fact, he finds out that the city has to authorize it first before the state authorizes it. Am I, am I correct in this?
Well, I mean, he still can operate as a restaurant. Now, the question is, why can he serve beer and alcohol?
I understand, I understand that. So I'm gonna ask you, and I want an honest answer, Walt. Had you known you were not going to be able to get a beer and wine license, would you still have remodeled it into a larger, into what it is now?
I could not afford to do that. No, I would not. I'm losing a three-bedroom unit.
I understand that.
$1,000 a month coming out of my retirement. I had to borrow from the bank to pay the taxes on the perch.
That's fine. Rod, can you answer this question? Is it safe to assume that he was under the assumption, because of past history with state and the past history of having a beer and wine license, that he would be allowed to have that? Or was he remiss in not going through, talking to the city about renewing that? I'm trying to find out where his degree of responsibility was.
Well, I think the research, what your business you're going to operate, to know what the law is in that particular area, was always a good idea. Just because he had a misunderstanding of what the law allowed is not an excuse and does grant, does not grant any rights.
I agree with that. If I was starting a new business, that's exactly what I would do. But I've had this business for quite a few years, and it was granted to me all those years. I saw no need to research what was already mine.
May I ask another question?
Go ahead.
The temporary license was issued, okay, let's back up. It had a license, but it wasn't meeting the food requirements, food sales requirements, so the license was pulled. Then when you remodeled it, a temporary license was given for what, okay, what was the parameters involved in their decision to give a temporary license?
Well, they wanted me to show them the figures of how much food we sell, and I believe it's like 60/40. You're supposed to have 40% food and 60% non-food items, which we have figures here how much food we are selling. And we're doing almost, almost $4,000 a month just in food.
Which you anticipate doing in beer and wine.
Yeah.
How much?
Well, it would be another 60% if, if, if we sell that much. But I certainly feel like we're qualified to sell $6,000 worth of beer, if we're selling $4,000 or $8,000 worth of beer. And I know that our food, our food sales will skyrocket if people have a place to hang out. The other thing about, you know, drinking on campus, I, I agree with you. I do agree with that. And when I first bought the perch, I didn't want that kind of a business to start with. But then I realized that the kids are gonna drink, and they're gonna drive and drink. Would you rather them driving and drinking, or would you rather have them stationed right there within walking distance?
Well, there's a lot of walking distance to campus. It's just a matter of getting your feet behind you. But that's neither here nor there. I got another person in the, oh, go ahead.
I'd like to ask Mr. Lockteff, if, I don't understand the, the business arrangement. You, you own the property, but you're leasing it to someone else who runs this business?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Because I, I saw this was on the agenda today, and I had a talk with Officer Lemets at the, that runs the campus part of the police department about what the history's been, and, and he wasn't very supportive of what's gone on in the past there.
Exactly, exactly. That's what I meant by getting the goats away from the sheep. I had two separate clients who actually stiffed me horribly, and it just took a long time for me to get rid of them. One of them was dealing in controlled substance. It just took forever to get them out of there. So now I have a responsible family man doing it, and I have not heard of any, any bad reports since 2012.
Well, you don't have a license now, so-
Well, no, well, we had a license in 2012.
With the same person operating the business?
Same person, exactly, exactly.
And is this the same, the perch, too, that's down on Sixth Street, same guy?
Same person, right. He opened that up because he needs the supplement to, to pay the rent on this one.
When I was discussing those with Officer Lemets, he indicated that there were some noise complaints and things going on at the other establishment already, and so that gives me pause, that if you have somebody that's running it that's maybe not too considerate of his neighbors.
All of those things can be controlled, and I promise you that they will be. I can promise you, I personally promise you that they will be controlled. The noise factor, too much drinking, whatever we have to do, I understand that somebody's allegedly was harassed because there's a little concrete thing out front. We're gonna remove that. And we'll landscape it so you can't sit on anything. So that'll eliminate the sidewalk problem. We're willing to do that.
Yeah, open container issues and things like that.
Yes.
You're willing to control that.
We're willing to do the best that we can and cooperate with you and the police department and whoever we have to cooperate with.
Okay, so now, now I have a question for Rod. If, if we, if we were to give him a variance to allow this, can we do it on a trial basis for a certain, do you have to renew this every year?
No, I don't, didn't see that during the research. It's just, once he's getting a waiver, and you've basically given him the license to, to do that.
Okay.
But I would agree to a probation period.
Is, is that something we could construct?
I don't know how, I'd have to research to see whether you could really put a, you know, sunset on your waiver. I don't, I didn't see anywhere where I saw that, where you could do that.
Well, Mr. Lockteff, I have some other people that'd like to say something.
Oh, certainly.
If we could, Sharon, if you want to-
You want me to say Kate?
Yeah, please.
Thank you very much for your help, sir.
Introduce yourself and-
I'm Sharon Fritz. I'm, I work at the University of Idaho, and I'm also a parent of two young adults. And I really appreciate speaking right after the conversation that you were just having about, are there some controls that we could put on? The University of Idaho has put a lot of time and effort and money into addressing the issue of excessive drinking by our, by our students. And what we would like to do is see if there's some way we can partner with the community to further those efforts. There are some evidence-based programs that are called environmental strategies that are kind of consistent with what we were just talking about, or what was just talked about, in terms of, there are ways that we could restrict the amount of advertising, restrict happy hours. Those are the kinds of things that encourage overconsumption and increased risk. Can we require responsible beverage service training? I know that's not required in the state of Idaho, but are, these are some options that we might consider, especially if we're gonna do a probationary period. Can we increase enforcement, publicized enforcement by the police? Can we be consistent with ID checks and all those kinds of things? So those are some environmental strategies that have been demonstrated by research to be effective in working with colleges and the environment and reducing risk. And I guess for me, this is so close to our environment. I mean, it's essentially on our campus. And I was, we're in the process of developing a campus community task force to address this issue from an environmental approach. And so I was thinking, this would be a great opportunity for us to begin these conversations, maybe looking at this direction. So that's what I would like to encourage this committee to do, is that if you're gonna, whichever way you go, and if you're gonna allow this, that you give considerations to putting some guidelines on that and, and some of those evidence-based practices.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Fritz?
No.
I have a question.
Thank you, Sharon.
Comments later, but no questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Kip Jenkins. I am the director of the LDS Institute of Religion and the building coordinator for the property on 902 Deacon Avenue. I've been director since 1990, for 25 years.
Okay.
And we want that ordinance obeyed, period. We have owned that property since 1927. We have had a church on that property since 1928 consistently. We have educated in both church and in church school that's operated out of that building, over 8,000 students. And not every student wants to drink, sir.
Please address all your comments to us.
When 1953 came around and the perch came out, we petitioned the Moscow City Council to not allow a liquor license to be given. We were voted out. Every time, an opportunity for a liquor license has come up, and we've discovered that someone else is new, someone else knew was applying to it, we have vehemently opposed any letter drafted. We have been good citizens. We have not had the police department come ever and put down any noisy LDS party. We have had no student of ours that has, has broken anything or defaced any property of any of our neighbors, ever, in the nearly 100 years we've been in institute since 1926. I went through the history today, and over $8,000 of property damage has come because of direct, of direct liquor or, under the influence of alcohol. We've had four signs stolen. Three have been from the fraternity that is, operates right next door to the perch. We've had 18 windows broken. We had one that we reported to the Moscow City Police Department, where a beer bottle was thrown through our library window, almost hit a girl as she was studying. We're tired. We're tired of the alcohol-induced activities that bring property damage and difficulty for our students. He talks about $80,000 that he's put in. We put in $185,000 for a parking lot. We put in $800,000 to remodel that building. We will put in another $6,000 to remodel all of the doors. 18 windows. 18 windows in my 25 years. Gentlemen, I'm tired of not being protected by an ordinance that intends to protect me from property damage and other difficulties that come because of alcohol. If they're selling $4,000 in food, they can use another $1,000 that they can sell in soda pop. But no more liquor, please. I'm asking that that ordinance be administered and adhered to. I also taught with church authorities, and we're ready to litigate if we have to.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Brian, wanna say anything?
I-
You gotta come up here if you say something, Brian.
Sure. I'm Brian Doolin with the University of Idaho, and I'm not here representing the University of Idaho at all today. And I'm not, I'm not speaking in opposition to the purchase application. I do have just a few concerns. Two of the biggest environmental strategies that Sharon had talked about earlier, proximity to campus and low cost of alcohol, are two of the biggest environmental risk factors for overconsumption. At the perch, too, they, they have pretty aggressive pricing for, for alcohol. They sell 32-ounce cups of alcohol, of beer, for $2.50. And so it kind of, kind of markets directly at our students and promotes higher consumption. For $5, a student could have two of these. If, if I, as a 200-pound man, I weighed in at 204 this morning, but normally about 200, were to have two of these, I'd be at a .09 within an hour. If a 120-pound girl drank two of these, she would be at a .18 in an hour. And so if, if they were to get a permit to sell alcohol, we would just really encourage them to be very mindful about their pricing strategies and to take some steps to limit overconsumption for our students. So, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Walt, did you have something else you'd like to-
Yes, I do, if I may.
What kind of-
I realize that, sir, but I'm fighting for my livelihood here.
I understand.
I understand that $160,000 for a parking lot is a lot of money. However, it did not come out of his pocket. And I praise the fact that not all students are drinkers. That's fantastic. Now, that lady was concerned about education. I'm willing to work with her to see what we can do. I want a responsible business. I want a proud, something that I could be proud of, not something that I have to make excuses, "Why is, why is this happening? Why are the police over here?" I'm not interested in that. And I am willing to work with, with that lady. I'm willing to work with the attorney. I'm willing to work with anybody.
Okay. Any others?
You, you're not selling by the drink, but you're selling as a convenience store, you're still selling it as carryout. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
You have the number of, amount of sales that you have in carryout?
Yes.
I'd like to know what that is.
I guess give one to Bill for the record.
Well, that's what we're, yes, that's what we're concentrating on, is to show that we are a restaurant. However, that is not the question here.
Right.
So now, the beer sales, we have for January, from January 15th, because there was a break there, okay, we have, what is that, 362 and $32 worth of wine and $300 worth of food. And that's only for 15 days in January, I believe, because that was a Christmas break. Now, if we go into, oh-
Let's call them 12, what's that reflect?
What, excuse me?
Let's just call them.
I think that's January 12.
Yeah, that's the 12, 13, 14, and 15. Those are the days. Those are the days.
January 12, 13.
Those are the days of January.
So on the 13th, you sold $591 worth of beer?
On the 13th, we sold...
Second column over.
That's the 12th. No, we sold...
On the 12th, rather.
12th, yes.
On the 12th.
Correct. And on the 13th, it was probably a weekend, so that would have went up to $1,000.
Okay. Rod, there's no question that the packaged beer sales is okay?
They have a license for a convenience store. They can sell beer for offsite. The issue is onsite versus offsite consumption.
Right, this is by the drink we're talking about.
Kenny would like to speak, if we could give him a chance here. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
My name is Peramjit Singh. I'm the president of the Post Jink. I just like to explain one little thing. I've worked in that place since 2012 with the previous one or two. Since last year, when I took over this place, looking at my number and the previous number I have on my record and my mind, we do, my sales go beer has been going up. The story is on there. I want to, you know, share with the people here from the university and all that. It's, we try to control underage drinking. People living in the houses there. So suppose I'm 21, I'm living in a house. I have 20 freshmen come this year. And if I have a right to go to perch, have, sit down, have drank the tub, I drank, and I'm going to come there and drink two tubs, go back home myself, I'm good to go. Now, why can't I come there? I don't want to walk to the downtown. And I hear the freshman walk to me, he say, here's $20, can you go through perch, buy a 30-pack, and we can share. That season, a lot of beer walk from my store to the houses. The people can, can drink more there. If I have facility to drink, serving people come there, sit and drink, and that number is going to be cut half.
Are you going to quit selling it to go?
No, I'm still going to do, but it's going to cut the half off.
Maybe, but probably not.
This is, I will let you explain it.
I know how things work.
And then it's, I have people, the house is called the dry, completely dry. 10 o'clock night, guy coming with golf stick bag, put in three 30-pack in there, jipper up, put in his backpack and walk to the home. Where the carrying is, golf stick, whatever, you know, you guys call. Then they can have a party in there again.
Well, yeah, that's not your fault, but...
No, I, that's, I was explaining, if the people who they come to sit down and drink, they're, they're taking more beer back home, they can come there and just sit down and drink, have, you know, buy their drink.
So then the question I would pose to you is if you were allowed to sell beer and wine onsite, would you stop selling it to carryout?
Sure, I do that.
You'd quit selling beer to go?
Yes, I do that.
You'd quit selling half racks and six packs?
Yes, yes.
Sell it only onsite to be consumed onsite, period?
Yes, I can do that.
I don't think, that's not something we can agree to right now, anyway. I appreciate your comments and we'll take them under consideration.
Thanks.
How do you guys want to proceed?
I just have one more question.
I know what you're going to say, so we're good.
Well, I've got a number of issues with this. If this was a brand-new business starting out there, I would say no. It doesn't belong on campus, period. I'm sorry, that's just how I feel. You talk about all the damage that was done to the LDS church, I don't think, there's very little proof how much of that was caused by the perch, because there's a lot of drinking that goes on campus. Most of the residents are under the age of 21 that live on campus, so they can't come to the perch and drink. But somebody can come there and buy beer to carryout, just as you indicated, and take it to the residence halls or to sororities or fraternities, time for party time, okay? I think that's a bigger concern than onsite consumption, quite frankly. Because if you had onsite consumption, it would be only 21-year-olds. And you don't have very many 21-year-olds that live on campus. Vast majority of them are underage. And keeping the alcohol out of the hands of the underage students is the most important thing to me. I think once they hit the age of 21, a lot of them have become a little bit more mature when it comes to their drinking habits. Now, the other issue that I have is the fact that this has been an ongoing situation.
I want to clarify that, because I think you do think it was an ongoing restaurant. They were actually operating basically as a bar, which was clearly illegal even under our zoning order. They were actually had prohibited anybody under 21 from going in there, so that was everything that they were operating as a bar.
Mm-hmm. But Mr. Lochtef went ahead with the, with his remodel and expansion with the assumption, right or wrong, that he was going to be able to continue to sell beer and wine onsite. And then after he moves along and the number of dollars have been spent, he suddenly finds out that there's another hoop that he has to jump through, and now this hoop appears to be too high for him to go through, and now he's another business that, all of a sudden, the world changed on him. And now he has a hard time complying with what's going to have to happen. These are where I'm conflicted.
Jim?
Yeah, I, I have mixed feelings about this because I, Mr. Lochtef owns the property and he's trying to lease it out and create some income for himself, and he's been, had people there in the past that have had a license before, and so he would, I could see where he would have the idea that he would be allowed to have a license in the future. But I also see that it hasn't been responsibly administered in the past, and that gives me a lot of concern. You know, the idea that they're, they're close to a religious institution, I mean, clearly within, close enough that we could deny it just based on that. But I'm inclined to allow people to try and make a living if they're doing it responsibly. I'm not opposed to alcohol consumption in a responsible way, but I think a lot of times on campus, it becomes the central activity and it becomes, the object of the game is to see how inebriated you could get, not have a beer with a sandwich. And I think that's a big problem, and I think that's what Mrs. Fritz is bringing up, that we need to do something to change that modeling. So I guess I, what I would like to do is table this until we have a chance to discuss whether we can do some sort of a sunset probationary period and so that we can, A, see that Mr. Lochtef can possibly make a reasonable amount of money from this and deal with the concerns of the neighbors, to make sure that they don't have property damage and insults and problems that go along with that. So that's, that's where I'd like to go with it. I'd like to take some time to consider it in more detail than, more time than we have to consider it this afternoon.
Just one other comment that I have. Sir, you indicated, or you implied, that should not just go the direction that you desire, that you're prepared to go ahead with litigation. That sounds like a threat. And that does sound like a threat to me, and sir, I do not respond well to threats.
Rod?
Just to let you know, it is your discretion, it's the city council's discretion, whether they grant the waiver or not. That is fully within your discretion.
Right.
If you grant it, or you don't grant it, that's up to you. You have no liability.
Does the property owner have any way to appeal our decision?
Whether you abused your discretion, if he showed that you, if he showed that you abused the discretion.
I guess, can you find out by the next administrative committee meeting, what Jim was asking, if there is some...
Whether he can waiver, or get some sunset on a waiver?
Some sort of probationary thing, I mean...
I mean, I can look, I can do the research. I don't think that there's anything out there on that.
Bring that back here, and I doubt there is too, but that way we'll know, and then we'll be able to make that decision, and then we'll bring it back to admin.
Also, this body here would only recommend to send it to council and recommend...
They understand.
Approval or not. We would not make a decision today on whether he could get a permit, but I think we should...
Clarify, Dan, what it is that you would like to have brought back, and what kind of a waiver?
What Jim was talking about was if there was some sort of, you know...
Probationary period.
Probationary period with conditions, I guess, is...
I would certainly like to see that. I'd also like to see, if council decided to go ahead and allow this, I would certainly like to see a, somehow, in the agreement, it could be made that out, that carryouts sales would be discontinued. But I don't know how that can be enforced.
I don't think you can do that.
I mean, you're allowed and you're allowed and...
Either you are or you aren't.
Well, you're not, well, you know, I mean, we're an honorable individual, unless we're standing there at the door, we can't monitor it, so I don't, we can't put that kind of a provision in there.
One thing before I walk out of here, I got to drive while we're smoking. Can I get it off?
If you bring it up.
If it would, if it would ease your mind, sir, we could at least, at least, limit the amount of carryout that we have. Maybe carry the worst beer that we could find on the market, so nobody would buy it. I'm willing to, I'm willing to work any way that I can.
Walt, I was in college and it didn't matter.
I know, I know. I know that, because it's going to happen. I realize not all students drink, and I thank God for that. I really honestly do, because it's not a good thing. My brother died from alcohol poisoning, and it's just, it's a horrible thing. But it's, it's here.
Right.
It's here.
Thank you.
We will be as responsible as we possibly can. Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll bring this back in two weeks and see what Rod has for us and go from there.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Next up on the agenda is Fire Department Mutual Aid Agreement with the City of Lewiston, and Brian Nickerson is going to share that with us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having me here.
Anytime. So what's up?
This, the agreement is strictly a, basically just a renewal, if you will. It did get some things changed throughout the years. The one big change is, is that a lot of organizations do a blanket mutual aid agreement. So in other words, there could be 10, 15, 20 different organizations on here. But sometimes things change in organizations that either allows or disallows some things to occur. So then you have to go back and basically renew the whole agreement with everybody again. So Chief Michael Buss, myself, and Chief Heston over in Pullman, we're all talking about splitting them all out into individuals versus a group, a group blanket type mutual aid agreement. What I foresee coming down is, once we get, we agree to this, this will be the template for pretty much everybody else that we, we have mutual aid agreements with, which would be the Potlatch, the Dairy, the Troy, the Pullmans, and everybody else, few and far between.
So we'll have possibly, you know, up to 20 mutual aid agreements?
Could, yes.
When this is all set.
Kendrick?
Kendrick Julia.
You didn't have to go down for that one, though, did you?
No, no, I didn't.
This works both ways, too.
Yes, it's not, yeah, that's, that's the thing about the mutual aid agreement, is it's a two-way street and, and the rule, Fire District did sign this.
We did run with the rural.
The rule, the rule is separate, just because of the kind of, the commissioners and...
I'm sorry, did you say, we have mutual aid with Pullman?
No, the, we do.
We do already.
We do have one, yes, okay.
Yes, but over, over time, we'll replace that.
It's part of the big blanket agreement that is out there.
And this just cleans some stuff up from, from over the years and separates them all into individuals, so that's really...
This counts fire and EMS?
Fire and EMS, yes.
And other...
Any other, anything that they need, yes.
Incidents and things like that.
Anything they need or anything we need.
Okay. You guys got any questions? Chief Nickerson has the straightforward one today.
That's good to me.
I can't, I can see no reason to oppose that.
Just keep thinking, gentlemen.
We're going to keep seeing these probably in the coming months?
Yeah, in the coming months. We wanted to do this one first and make sure there was no other, this is, this is about the fifth or sixth draft.
The City of Lewiston is probably looking at one, two.
Yes, yeah. And Rod had, Rod had already read through this and red-marked it, and we all have all those back and forth, so. So this is the, the template.
Well, if you guys are all right with it, we move this forward to consent.
As long as you, as long as you think your big city fire trucks are good enough to run down the highway for 35 miles without blowing up.
We'll see that when we do the budget. How about that?
All right. We'll go ahead and recommend approval and put her on the consent agenda.
Awesome, thank you. Appreciate it.
Next up is a street closure policy, and Les McDonald is going to present. Looks like he's got help from his deputy.
Nope. I always got this tie on again.
Badge embroidered in his shirt. That's...
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. We're here today to talk a little bit about the draft street closures policy. And this was an item that originally came before this, actually Public Works Finance, I think, originally, several years back. And it kind of went on hiatus for a while, where we worked on some other things, and recently, we've recently have determined that it needed to come back and hopefully get completed this time to address some issues that are ongoing now and that we've been seeing over the last year or so. So we'll take a few minutes and just kind of walk through the draft policy and some of the highlights that are within it, and then hopefully answer any questions that you might have. Starting out, the policy has several components within it. There's an objective section at the beginning, a little bit of background, so history as to why we're developing a policy and what it's intended to do. We're outlining some of the procedures that will be followed in the processing of street closures and the permits associated with those. Set forth some of the conditions that would be applied to closures for the different types and would be part of the conditions of the permits being issued for those types of closures. Some general provisions that just address some of the general issues related to closures that we encounter. What happens during non-compliance with permit conditions, and contact information, you know, where you apply for permits. So out of those, we'll kind of take a look at those five sections that are in white. Those were the areas that probably have the items of most interest to the group. So starting with the policy objectives, really it's pretty simple. We want to provide a very consistent and predictable method for the process. So that is something that the staff understands how it operates, what kind of rules to apply, when things can happen and when they cannot. For the applicants, it's a consistent method that's applied to every applicant that comes through the door. If they've applied for something in the past, it should be then a similar process the next time they come through the door. So it's, it's a fairly simple objective, but it really addresses a lot of issues that we could potentially have if we don't have a, a good policy in place. On the background side, we get a lot of requests throughout the year for all different types of street closures. They include parades, block parties, any kind of community event that may be happening down on Main Street, construction projects all over town, rallies, musical shows, walks, gatherings.
This just, doesn't just work for Main Street, this is...
This is all streets, all right-of-way within the system, within the city. And because of that, you know, we have encompassed all these different types of events and activities that we see. The most frequent are really our construction closures. We get a lot of those. They're handled through the Engineering Division of Public Works, and, you know, we deal with them weekly. Others are, you know, more periodic and seasonal, that type of thing, and they can vary in intent.
Does this even include private residential block parties?
Yes, it would. So we'll come back to those, because those are one of the areas we've identified. So in the procedure section, as I mentioned earlier, these are processed through the Engineering Division of Public Works. As needed, we have additional reviews from Police Department, Fire Department, Streets Division, and the Parks and Recreation Departments. The more typical day-to-day construction-related closures are really handled through engineering with some review from streets. And then as we get into parades or downtown street closures for events, then we bring in the other departments and divisions as needed to comment upon those, because they are more involved in those types of events than just the standard street closure for, you know, installing a pipe in the, in the street. the street. We do have fees associated with this. They are in the fee schedule and there will be a couple more items on fees that we'll talk about as we go through this. In the conditions section, we've really broken it into four different areas. So, parades, so closures for parades, community event closures, those would be the non-parade events that are typically happening downtown, primarily on Main Street, could be on other major areas throughout the city. But we see most of those really along Main Street itself.
Would, would that include, is somebody, would somebody have the ability, you know, we talk about public right-of-way, to use, say, the Jackson Street parking lot for something?
Well, it's not right-of-way. It's actually city property. We don't typically see that one. It's not, it's not a park and it's not right-of-way, so it's, it's, it's a bit of an oddity. We would probably treat it in a similar manner to what's in this policy. It is not addressed specifically in this policy. I don't know if we've ever had a request for closure there.
I don't know that there's been any, but...
No, other than the farmer's market over the years.
The farmer's market.
But that was ours, so.
Yeah, exactly. Neighborhood block parties, something Wayne mentioned. We do see those and there's always questions about, can you do them? How do you do them? What are the rules? You know, when, when and where and how? And then, construction closures, as we've touched on. So, those are the four major categories that we've broken these events into. We think most things would fall within these or potentially would not be regulated under certain conditions. There's, there's a certain amount of free speech activities or we're gonna go get a bunch of folks and just walk down a sidewalk that really are not, you know, a regulated aspect.
It's not necessarily a parade.
It's not really a parade. Some of those events, we would like people to let us know they're happening, to make sure that there's not a conflict out there, those types of things. And that is addressed in the policy. But they're not necessarily an event that requires a, a closure or a permit. These are the ones we think that would. All right, so jumping in, jumping into those four categories, starting with parade closures. Part of what we wanted to do here was to put some kind of a, you know, criteria or parameters under which permits can be issued and the expectations for the applicants as to what would be allowed. And so, as just a general set of rules would be, are included in each of these different types of activities. So, for duration for parades, closures would be a limited of eight hours per day. That includes setup time, staging, actual parade event, and then cleanup and reopening the street. Limited to seven AM in the morning to midnight of the same day, one day per weekend. And there would be a provision that would allow exceptions by the city supervisor. So, if there's some overriding issue that comes along that says, you know, we need to do something a little different, maybe it's nine hours because of whatever.
The Vandal's just won the national championship.
There you go. And we want to go later than midnight, you know, and it spills into the next weekend day. Okay, there would be potentially, you know, some exceptions.
Only on weekend days?
The, the, the exceptions, we just, we wanted to leave at the city supervisor's discretion. Since it would be an exception, we wanted to have the general parameters. Since it would be an anomaly, we wanted to leave that at the discretion of the city supervisor so they could determine if that was an appropriate anomaly or not.
Is, is just weekend, are just weekend days listed?
It is not, it is not limited to weekends only. We're just saying, if you do have one on a weekend, we only want to have it one of the two days.
We're gonna have one on Tuesday and Wednesday, just not Saturday.
Certainly could. And, and that would be a rarity. I don't, we've had very few weekday events. There probably are few.
Light of the night occasionally.
Light of the night occasionally, yeah. A few winter parades, maybe a Mardi Gras years past. But typically, they're weekend events. Okay. The parades, which, again, primarily happen on Main Street, would not be allowed to conflict with farmer's market under this policy. Now, before you say it, I know there's one exception, which look above to that exception by city supervisor. That would be one of those exceptions that...
But that's a, that's kind of our standing exception there.
That, yeah, that's the one that we would anticipate. There would be a request to the city supervisor to grant an exception for the U of I Homecoming Parade.
And we need to probably tell them that they need to ask.
They already, they already submit for an exception, because they are, they submit every year for a waiver of the fees. They, they put in a request with Gary for a waiver of any fees associated with the parade. And so, they are already submitting for, and so through that process, Gary could grant the exception and allow it.
I think basically when the schedule comes out is when they, well, when they should apply, I suppose.
As soon as they know, that would be the best.
Yeah, and we, it's, it's on the calendar as soon as it comes out.
So, but with, with that one known exception that has its history and its reasons for being granted an exception, the policy would state that you could not interfere with the market. If you're gonna have a parade at six PM on Saturday night on a market day, that's probably okay, but not during the market time. The city's costs that are accumulated or, you know, that are borne because of the event would have to be paid by the applicant. Okay, now, this is a little bit of a departure from the past. We've recharged for parade permits, street closure permits, but would not necessarily charge the full amount of the cost that the city bears for setting up, cleaning up, managing, you know, police presence, all those things that go into parades and events that city has to, has to cover. So, what's in the policy is that those costs would need to be addressed by the applicant and there would be fees set in the fee schedule.
So, they'll already be there so that when I come in to apply for my permit, I can see, okay, well, it's, I'm looking at three hours of police presence and...
It's a closure from this point to this point.
Yeah, we'll have, we have our pre-approved parade routes currently that, that they could apply for one of those and there's a fixed amount for that. And so, we have the small route with a fixed amount, the large route with a fixed amount. And then, if they were applying for a different route outside of that, it would be subject to approval of the route. And then, it would be on a time and materials, depending on what it took to set up the parade and what sort of police presence was necessary.
And part of what Tyler's been working on is, is a, really a chart, if you will, of kind of a sliding scale of what kind of rates we would have based on different, different types of closures. Because, for instance, closing from Third to Sixth Street is pretty easy. We've got the Ballard system set up. It doesn't take long to, you know, put them in place and you're there. As soon as you extend it north, then you have another setup. So, there's added time, added materials. If you move out of that location, now it's all portable signage and more staff time, you know. And so, there's kind of the sliding scale depending on location and extent and the amount of time involved. And so, the, the idea is that we would try to bring that forward in as consolidated a manner as we can into the fee schedule. So, then again, it's predictable as it can be for folks coming in saying, yep, here's the rate this year. This is what the event is that I'm going to do. I should be able to look it up and find out. Here's what my rate is.
So, along with this, we'll, we will probably have a public hearing on a fee schedule?
It would have to be, yes. When, when it does go into the fee schedule, whether it's, you know, right now or we adopt it with the next round of the fee schedule this summer, you know, either way.
In support of what Les was speaking of there, you know, one of the, the last time we brought this to the council, there really was a desire to, we, we want a vibrant downtown. We want to help events happen. And a lot of the feedback that we've gotten from people who do want to hold community events downtown, you know, up to this point, we've been telling them they have to get their own traffic control. And, and several applicants have said, hey, you know what, I, rather than, I, I don't know who to call. I don't know how to set it up. I, you know, do I have to have certified people? Can I just have my employees, et cetera? We've had safety concerns. And so, for some of these very routine closures like our downtown, in an effort to make our downtown more friendly for these types of events, to have that vibrant downtown, the goal was to set it up so that we could have them just come in and as part of their application fee, we say, okay, look, here's, basically, here's your menu of closures. You can close one block for this much, two blocks for this much, you know, and make it a very, a very friendly, approachable system so that they know what they're getting to. And then, they just tell us the times and it's taken care of. And so, we, we're hoping that that will make it a, a more palatable and user-friendly system.
Makes it pretty transparent.
That's the idea. For parades, we would require insurance and the city named us an additional insurer, just because of the nature and the exposure of that type of event. Community event closures, so this would be the non-parade events. Again, typically, they're downtown, not always. We might see something, you know, next to East City Park, for instance, they want to close a block and have something spill out into the street. So, that might be an example. Similar types of duration requirements, eight hours per event, seven AM to midnight, one day per weekend, exceptions by the city supervisor. And again, city costs, just as we talked about, that would be borne by the applicant for the city's expenses. And also, insurance coverage requirement, again, because of the nature of the event. Sometimes these are fairly large, they're open to the public, a lot of folks coming and going. So, we felt it was appropriate to continue the insurance coverage requirement there. Neighborhood block parties are a little bit different. Still, eight-hour, eight-hour limitation, a little bit later in the morning, eight AM to dusk, and one day per weekend. And the dusk requirement there is, because as, once you traverse into the night hours, the traffic control requirement changes. You have to have something that's approved for nighttime use. And there's just more to that. And it, I, I think part of what we were looking at is the, the expectation of where a block party occurs as compared to maybe downtown. People are pretty used to events downtown and, oh, the street's closed today because there's farmer's market, there's a parade today, there's an event tonight. That happens on a fairly consistent, regular basis. The block parties, that's not the case. And so, a driver's out there and he comes around a corner and, oh, guess what? The street's closed because there's a block party tonight, which is the first time I've seen one here, ever, right? And so, add to that darkness and people moving around and closing that may not be that visible. It's just, it's the kind of situation we felt it was probably more appropriate to limit it to daylight hours. Now, I know some folks may not like that, because they want to carry it into the evening on Saturday night.
Move it to the yard.
Move it to the yard. Okay. Prove traffic control devices would be required. They would be responsibility of the applicant. The, the way the policy is set up, though, there, there are a couple of options. One is they go out and they hire somebody or rent the signs from the appropriate place and get the appropriate signage with the appropriate setup and do it themselves, okay, which as Tyler said, is daunting for many of the applicants. The alternative that's in the policy, that's in the draft, is that they could, in essence, hire the city to do that. And we would have...
Pay the X dollars to have the street department come out.
We would have, have rates, there are rates in the fee schedule for sign rental right now. We would use those as the basis to say, okay, for a block party, you know, we will come out and set these up. And we know that they're the right signs, the right type, and the right...
People installing.
Application, the right people installing.
Couple of cars parked like this with a sign saying, block party, come join us.
As long as the emergency flashers are, no.
I think that's M U T C D.
You don't think that'd be approved?
It might fall a little short.
But one of the things we were trying to do with the block parties is, you know, it's, it's something that, again, we want to encourage community cohesion and people getting with their neighbors. A concern is, the M U T C D requirements do require someone who has experience installing traffic control to do that. So, you know, Jim and Bill going out and throwing cones in the road, you know, they may not. And then, if there was to be an accident or an event, you know, you, which you would never want to have happen, but there'd be real concerns about just the potential safety of it. And so, we're providing the option of either hiring a company that can come and do it or, you know, trying to keep it as cost-effective as we can and saying, look, if you guys don't want to mess with that, check this box, tell us when to come, we'll show up, we'll put them out, we'll come back, we'll pick them up.
For, for a fee.
For a fee, for a fee. Because we do need to cover the cost, because if it's a Saturday event...
You talked about providing insurance. People having a parade, people having a street closure have to provide insurance, too. Is that...
Amazingly enough, that's the next item.
Gotta have you.
Well, none way.
Which, if you look in the policy, you'll see under the, the block party section, this giant O R that's in there with the highlights, because this is one that we felt that the council needed to weigh in on. You know, we wrote it two different ways. One is that, yes, you'd be required to do insurance, just like all the other events, for all those same reasons, plus the added issue of you're in a place that people aren't expecting you to be, okay. But also recognize that that is a very big challenge for homeowners to deal with, to go out and find some kind of event insurance policy to have a block party this Friday night, you know, in your neighborhood. So, the option to that would be to use a release of liability agreement that they would sign, that would release the city from all liability associated with what they're doing and their event and the activities of, you know, the people that are there, and then not require insurance of them.
One person has to be the contact with, between them and the city.
Right.
Signing off on this.
And there are limits to the effectiveness of that kind of a document, which is something that, you know, our city attorney will, you know, certainly want to weigh in on at some point.
What I was going to bring up, is we've all heard of a lot of cases where release of liabilities documents didn't hold up worth a darn in court. So, is, is our attorney, city attorney, is he comfortable with that?
He, he was part of the development of the policy and that was something we talked about. And, you know, frankly, the bottom line is, it's in the city right-of-way. So, I guess from my perspective, and maybe Rod can chime in on this, but we're gonna be subject to suits because it's our street.
Right.
Whether this document's there or not.
Thank you. Yeah, this was a risk management issue. The question is, if you require the insurance, how much more is that gonna cost? And is that gonna decrease the amount of people that are gonna want to do this? Are you gonna take the risk with a release of liability? And the person who actually causes the damage normally is gonna be held responsible. But if that person doesn't have anything, then, of course, that's gonna go after anybody that they possibly can. So, that would be a policy question.
It's part of our conversation, I mean, Dan, that, that, as Rod said, that our, our concern was, and the reason we left it in is, if we want to encourage this type of behavior, and, and if I'm the guy that's organizing this, if now, you know, if, if it's easy enough if I just have to go to City Hall like I've always had to done and I do, and I fill out the permit, and now I can, you know, I check the box and the traffic control's gonna be there and set up, and I know that's gonna be right, okay, I can still do this. It's, it's as small a fee as we can keep it, not overwhelming. But now, if on top of that, you're saying, okay, now I have to go find an insurance broker and buy a policy for this thing, you know, I'm, it's just far less likely that I'm gonna go do that. And so, what we want to do is, is make sure that the process is there and that it's adequate. And as Rod said, from a risk management standpoint, if, if, if there is, what, what the level of risk is, and that's a policy decision that...
Well, you know, honestly, we're gonna have to see a few more of these happen to see how it works, I guess.
We've, we've had several block, block parties every year. You know, block parties is something that's gone on for, you know, long, long before I was here. You know, for the longest time, people would just call up and the Streets Department would drop off a sawhorse barricade. And then, they'd pull them in the street, and then when they're done, they'd pull them out of the street. You know, and so, that's gone on for a very long time.
But no more, because of requirements for the traffic control, proper signs.
Dave?
So, continuing with the block parties, they would be prohibited on collector and arterial streets. The idea is that these are neighborhood, local streets, you know, low volume, low speed. And so, we don't, wouldn't want to see them on the, on the higher-class streets, classification streets, put it that way. And consumption on alcohol, of alcohol on the right-of-way is prohibited, which is the current code. And so, that would not go away during a block party. So, they would still be subject to open container laws and the right-of-way. Okay. Construction closures, these are fairly straightforward. We have written it in, happen all the time. We have written it in as a twelve-hour per day, seven AM to dusk, but do allow for extensions of hours and night closures with prior approval. And typically, that would happen right at the permit stage, that, hey, we need to close the street for three days because we're building, you know, this, this improvement. So, then we know upfront. But it's encouraged, you know, it is encouragement in this form to say, you know, let's get in and get out. You know, get the job done and move on your way. Don't linger if you don't have to. If it takes more than that, understandable, we'll work with you on that. But, you know, we're trying, the streets are there for use by the public and we want to keep them open for that purpose.
And, um, emergency closures, that's just gonna happen and we're, we're...
We, we deal with those as they happen, certainly. And, and those things will happen, absolutely. Again, proved traffic control devices are the responsibility of the applicant. This is the case today. They have to provide traffic control plans. They're reviewed through the Engineering Department, approved. They have to provide the appropriate devices on the site.
This is something that's really come along, Wayne. It's probably the one that's currently the most regulated and best regulated within, with our current practices. Our contractors and construction folks in the area have really done a nice job of getting up to speed on traffic control. And so, they, they really work with us well and they're, they're well-versed now in, in what they need to, to be appropriately signed out there. And so, this, this is functioning pretty well.
So, then the other components, the non-compliance, if a permit is issued, an event is beginning or there are some steps that need to be taken before it actually begins and the applicant is not conforming to the requirements either set forth in the policy or that may be specified in the permit, then, and it's identified, they would be given an opportunity to remedy that situation, to correct it. So, maybe the traffic control is incorrect, for instance. The Police Department typically would be the entity, they would deal with them if they're out in the field or ready, to let them know that, hey, here's a problem, you're not in compliance, you need to take care of this. If they do not, then they would be subject to revocation of the permit. So, it could be revoked. And where it gets a little interesting in this policy, to give it a little bit of teeth, is that if they do fail to meet the requirements of the permit under the first offense, they would be prohibited from receiving a new permit for a period of one year from that date. After that year, they're eligible for permits again. If within a two-year period... If within a two-year period, they fail to meet the requirements again, then they'd be subject to a five-year prohibition on permits. That's one I want you to think about because that could be seen as fairly strict, right? But the idea here is we want to make sure that folks are complying and they're doing things in a safe and responsible manner. And it's not that difficult to do, to make sure that the people that are out there in the event are safe, the people that are driving to the event, don't run into situations that we don't want to run into. And so if they're given the opportunity to remedy and they fail to remedy and they just choose to ignore it, then there needs to be, in my mind anyway, and I think the mind of the group that worked on this, all the departments, a fairly stiff penalty associated with that. And that's what this is meant to do.
And the idea was, let's make this easy, let's make it very doable, and then let's expect people to comply with what we've put in place.
One item, final item in here, is the, there's some language right towards the end of the policy that talks about commercial gain. And this is something we wanted the council to think about as well and to consider how you'd like to address this because this is something that can get complex depending on the situations we're talking about, right? So we've written it such that community events and block party event closures are not to be done for commercial gain, right? Direct commercial gain from the use of the right of way. So it's not likely you're going to see it much in block parties, but in non-parade commercial-type event or community events, say it's a closure to have a little street party downtown.
Somebody's paying somebody something.
The anticipation here is that we did not want to see that public right of way closed to the detriment of the public so that a private entity or business can have commercial gain. So the events have to be open to the public and they have to be to the benefit of the public is the way this is addressed.
Open to the public, that means you're not charging admission.
That's correct.
Free and clear and everybody can come in.
That's correct. Now, where you will run into things is we will get a request for a beer garden on a downtown street somewhere, okay? And what do we do with that? Well, how is it run? Is it direct commercial gain? Who has access to it? So those are the kind of things we may see. And as we get into other policies, I think it's even on the agenda yet today, that's going to be one of the items that may influence this policy and vice versa. But really what we're trying to avoid here is, hey, let's go close downtown Main Street just so I can set up my tables and sell off my product.
We want to do an anniversary sale and have a little more room. That block of Main Street looks good, let's do that.
Right. So...
Not for personal gain.
Not for personal gain.
Right.
If it's good to the community, benefit for the community, if you're selling stuff in your store on the side of the street or on the sidewalk, you're not out in the street where the closure is, that's cool.
You provide a band out in the street and people happen to come into your store to buy more because it attracts a crowd, that's, you're providing a community thing and we're gathering people downtown, that's what we want, is a vibrant downtown. That's what we're going for.
But I wanted to point this one out specifically because I want the council to be aware of it, that it's in here, and think about that as you deal with your next item and how this moves forward. Okay, that's it. So any questions at this point?
The only thing I've got is noise ordinance implications, especially when we've got block parties downtown or anywhere.
I didn't put it on the screen, but it is in here, I think in every one of these, that they are subject to the provisions of the noise ordinance. And so if they want to do something outside of that, they have to get the waiver through the police department.
And residential block parties have to be shut down by dusk.
By dusk, but downtown stuff is where I see maybe going past.
And there is some concerns we've seen because of residents.
Ten o'clock is cut off on the noise ordinance now, so...
So that comes into play. If they're going to ban, when do they turn off? When do they take down?
How is that New Year's parade going to be?
Right. And that's the condition today. And so if they want to play till 11, they have to get approval to do that. And that has not changed.
Okay, well, this is ordinance. We're going to have to forward it for the council.
This is a policy. This is a policy.
Probably about by resolution would be what I'd expect.
Well, let's go ahead and move this forward then. Are you ready to move it forward to council?
We certainly can. We'll put together the resolution to support it and take it to full presentation of council.
Works for me.
Do we need to flesh out the fee schedule more or just do the resolution?
The fee schedule can follow in.
That's a whole other public hearing.
Yeah. The policy would just say it's in accordance with the fee schedule, then we'll deal with the fee schedule at the appropriate time.
All right.
All right. Thanks, gentlemen. Next up is an amendment to open container prohibition ordinance. I don't know how fast Rod can be to get that report, but we'll see what happens.
Good afternoon again. Today, currently under city code, open containers are prohibited on public streets and public right of ways. This proposed amendment before you, for your consideration, would specifically allow on certain public streets or certain public right of ways, in pursuit to a city council resolution, that open containers would be permitted under whatever control the resolution puts in it. And under this proposed amendment to the open container, it would only allow that resolution to deal with things that are happening in the central business district. If you didn't want to have that allowed throughout the whole community. Currently, right now, people can get council-passed resolutions that they can have open containers within city parks, as long as certain controls and limits are put in place. And this would be operating basically under the same guise as that. Because there may be occasions now where the presence of incel or consumption of alcohol may be appropriate and maybe should be permitted, as long as there's proper limits and conditions placed on that.
So we're talking a sectioned-off area?
Well, we're also talking about possibility in Farmer's Market for the wine and beer tasting and even the liquor tasting. And under the state code, they don't have to be blocked off, but it has to be controlled and you're just giving taste samples. And this would allow that to happen more than just in the park. Currently, last year, when the...
It was only in Friendship Square.
It was only in Friendship Square because open containers were prohibited in the street and public right of way.
And I guess then we'd probably want to try and, just so we can keep track, are these, say we've got five beer, wine, liquor vendors down there at the Farmer's Market, are we going to try and group them together so they're easier for us to track? Or are they going to be...
I would advise that Farmer's Market people, that's what they would do.
This is going to be a recommendation that Farmer's Market will be bringing to the council as they get it worked out, as far as how many and where they would like them placed.
And we could make a resolution for Farmer's Market to allow this for the entire market season. We wouldn't have to do this on a week-by-week basis.
Yeah, that's what we'd anticipate.
But then there might be another event, but somebody would have to get their timing right.
Or a community event, would you want to have a beer garden in there? I've heard that discussed. This would allow council to make that decision.
Okay. All right, well, it's pretty straightforward. There's not a lot of language change in this, so let's go ahead and forward this to council and move from there. All right, that's our regular agenda is over, so Amanda's rushing to the podium and she and Kathleen are going to give a report on Know Your Farmer, Know Your Food.
Pick the bottom left-hand side. I think there's a video.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We save the best for last.
Okay.
The easiest for last. There we go. No contention, hopefully. So we're just providing a recap of an event that we did called Know Your Farmer, Know Your Food. And Kathleen kind of took the training wheels off and let me loose. So this is what happened with it. I just want to give some context. This event coincided with a couple of other events in the community. So I also work with the Palouse Clearwater Food Coalition and they put on their fourth food summit and asked me to be a speaker on the multiplier effects, specifically with Farmer's Markets in Communities. So this just kind of shows you what that looks like. Oh, that animation's not supposed to be there. And then this also coincided, after the food summit, they held a reception for their guest speaker at Book People, which the co-op also cosponsored. So there was a lot going on that week. And then thanks to, we also showed a trailer of this movie called To Live Local. It focused on southern Idaho farmers. And we actually worked with the co-op who had a slot open for their February 18 Food for Thought film series. So there was a lot of collaboration going on between January and February with a lot of different partners and entities. So Know Your Farmer, Know Your Food essentially was a free panel discussion. We kind of vetted the topics as well as the speakers. And it was a planning committee with the City of Moscow, myself, AmeriCorps. We had AmeriCorps Vista over from the WSU Center for Civic Engagement, Misty from the co-op is here in the audience. She was also on the planning committee for part of it. U of I Extension, Rural Roots, and Deep Roots Farm. And I just want to show you, a lot of our farmers took the time to travel extensive distances to come and speak at this event. And actually, the tonne makers didn't even stay in town. They came for the event, stayed for three hours, and then left. So they're very dedicated to our market, even though they're not necessarily within our region. And we had the farmer speak on a couple of different topics. So we had small farms, we had CSA programs, we talked about institutional farming because we do have two land-grant universities that each have their own student-run farms. So it was really well-received and all of the speakers, they did really well to address the topics. So for a first-time event at the Kenworthy, we had 130 people in attendance. And just to give you an idea, there's 272 seats in that main auditorium. We used a variety of media outlets for advertising and Tri-State doesn't charge for use of their reader board, which was amazing for us. And the final posters on the left-hand side, the Tri-State Reader Board, and the bottom right, that's what you would see. I think we had it up about a week before the event happened. And then there's just a picture showing you that it was, it's a black and white photo. I don't know how well you can see it, but it was a really well-attended event. And my goal was not to just get people who are already entrenched in this, but to bring new people in. And that's why we wanted to keep it free and open to the public. So just to give you a breakdown, the expenses, the arts department, because Kenworthy does require insurance, took on that contract. So it cost us $382.50. And you can see with the in-kind services provided, that's over $400. If we look at the volunteer time donated, there is that seven-person planning committee. We had our guest speakers and that includes the time that they took to speak on the panel as well as driving round trip. We had a couple of groups tabling at the event. The co-op was one of them, U of I Extension, the Food Coalition as well. And then we had door prizes, which were also really well-received. And again, it just shows that breakdown. I've brought this several times now to the committee, what that volunteer valued time looks like. So we saved a lot of money, is what it comes down to, if you think about all the in-kind services and the volunteer time as well. And that's everything.
So you're going to make this an annual deal?
Yes, I would like to. I don't know what that looks like for the next AmeriCorps coming into my position, but I would like to see it continue. We had a lot of positive feedback. A lot of people who were at this event is a great precursor for them to attend the food summit the next day. And we saw a lot of new faces. It would be nice to hold it between Moscow, Pullman, but for now, we're just going to focus on Moscow. And hopefully next year, there will be an all-women panel is my great hope. And that's everything.
You didn't have any problem getting participants for your panel?
No. We, once we decided the topics, we then thought about who would speak really well to those topics and why. And then I went about inviting our farmers. Most of those farmers are in the market. The only one that wasn't was Brad Jaikle, who is a WSU Farm Manager. But we thought it was really important to show, I think if you saw up there, there is a difference between Idaho and Washington, as well as U of I and WSU alum.
So the purpose of holding the event in the first place was for the audience and citizens that attended to know that when Farmer's Markets are over with, it's not like the farmers all go on vacation and hang out on a beach in Mexico.
Only for a couple of weeks.
So that was kind of, you know, what do they do in the off-season? What's the planning component? What's the business model for farming? And the variety of farmers that spoke, from a very small farm. The Moscow Urban Farm is very close in town to the tonne makers. And the tonne makers are in the middle of a very large commodity system over there in Royal City, but they're not hanging out in Mexico in the winter either. So that was kind of the purpose of the event, is to do more outreach and education. And as Amanda's position with AmeriCorps is volunteer coordination for the market and outreach and education. So it was a really good fit for off-season time for our citizens.
Yeah, and I think it also just showcased, we had a lot of great questions from the audience about the difficult decisions that farmers have to make. And a lot of our farmers spoke to, you know, why they run their business a certain way or why they travel over 150 miles to come to the Moscow Farmer's Market and what that looks like for them on a day-to-day basis and growth issues. So it was really, I think, an important component that's been missing since I've come on with our market and maybe some disconnect with our customers.
Thanks, everybody.
You're good.
You're welcome.
Do we got anything else?
That's it.
All right, we'll consider ourselves adjourned.
We're done.